This is the Orlando Sentinel Editorial Board interview with the candidates for Orange County Commission, District 2. There are three candidates in the race and two of them are with us today. Challenger Sandra Fatni Hall and the incumbent Christine Moore. We're going to take about 30 minutes. So if the third challenger, I mean, the second challenger, Christopher Delgado, if he joins us, we will extend the time and we'll go through the questions. Joining us today are Jay Reddick, our insight editor, and of course, everybody knows Scott Maxwell. And so I guess we will go right into the first question, which is, it has been a pretty eventful week and one of the big things that happened this week was that the commission voted out a package of housing-related measures. I'd like to start with the one that may be headed for the ballot, which is a cap on the amount that rents can increase, but will affect a majority of rental units in the county. Do you support this and why or why not? And we'll start with Ms. Fatni Hall.
Yes, first of all, good morning to everyone. Thank you all so much for having us here this morning. Greatly appreciate. Yeah, so in reference to the question that you asked, are we supporting the rent ordinance? Is that what that was?
Yeah, the rent stabilization ordinance is what it's being called.
Okay, so of course, you know, Orange County leaders voted unanimously to enact a new rental notice ordinance on Tuesday. Under the ordinance, the landlords would have to give tenants written notice 60 days before increasing the rent more than 5%. So yes, I am in favor of that and I'll tell you why. I have to listen to the constituents that are out here in the street and I go around every single day and it always comes up at the front of the conversation, what about our rents? We're not able to afford our rents. What is going to be done for us? What is going to be put in place for us to help us from the county level? And as you know, it involves the state, it involves the county. We have to be the ones at the forefront speaking up on behalf of the residents that are here. So you have to listen to what it is that they're speaking about. And when you hear people every single day and every walks up, every walk of life just saying how they're not able to make ends meet, we have to put something in place. So even though it may be temporary, it has to be something to help. And this has worked in Miami-Dade. So if something has worked in Miami-Dade County, why wouldn't we adopt it here and help the citizens that are here suffering in terms of rent control? So I am in support of it. I would definitely wholeheartedly vote that way.
All right, Commissioner Moore, I believe if you could first address the rent stabilization, the cap, and then the notice period.
Well, this week, thank you for having us today. It definitely has been an eventful week and there is no doubt in this county that housing is at the top of everyone's concerns and it hasn't escaped my family or any other families trying to deal with the high cost of rent. And we know this is happening across the entire country, particularly in Florida with the growth. And as we knock on doors, we've got people moving here from California, New York, everywhere. And so the county commission this week has been tasked with trying to find some relief from our folks who are suffering. And we're not really the entire piece of the puzzle. So the conversation Tuesday, you know, really did surround a lot of different methods that we could do to help our folks. So the first, I know you asked me, Bubba, the harder question, but we did, and I did vote certainly to require landlords to give notification, 60 days notification, if they're going to raise the rents more than 5%. And I absolutely support that. The second piece about going to the ballot for rent stabilization, I do not support because it has not worked historically, hasn't worked. I would disagree that it's worked in Miami. It hasn't worked in St. Paul. In fact, we saw the housing starts move to the Minneapolis area. That's where I was from and born and familiar with that situation. And so I would love to help the people. I feel like that rent stabilization ordinance is false hope and it could, depending on how the results with a lawsuit or if the state, I would, with this legislature in place, expect that it would be preempted probably before the end of next session. So I favor looking at a whole host of other different remedies, not limited to perhaps coming back on the taxes so we can get the costs down for our owners. I would also look at hiring more staff so we could expedite the development request to get those through and really bring the private sector. Mayor Demings has done a great job in looking at housing for all and other issues. And I would like to see a big task force that focuses on what we can do here and then of course, work with the legislature and the federal government. So there's so many partners here, but I don't want to give our people false hope with a one-year, potentially three-month rent stabilization bill.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Moore, you mentioned taxes. That leads into another hot topic for the county. The mayor has proposed a raising taxes, excuse me, raising the sales tax to pay for transportation needs. Can you tell us where you stand on that issue?
Well, I did vote to put the issue on the ballot because the main issue up till maybe recently hearing a whole lot more about crime, we've been hearing about traffic concerns, congestion and accidents. The number of accidents in my district, it's just over the top and we've been having to look at speeds, do corridor studies. As you know, when you look at the dangerous by design study, this county was the worst in the country. Now, we dropped this year, which is a good thing, but we have a lot of work to do. So knowing that that's what my people talk about, I wanted to give them the opportunity to look at increasing buses, to increase trains. My folks are extremely interested in the Sun Rail going all the way up through College Park, Lockhart, it popped up onto Zellwood. That's a very popular solution. And so I did vote to put it on the ballot to have the conversation. Now, it's a lot of money. I mean, it's regressive and there's some issues with that type of taxing. Thankfully, the tourists would pay 51%, but I look forward to a robust conversation this fall to see what's in the interests of our folks, if they really would like to pay this to get some of these remedies.
And I appreciate that. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. My question, what I was really interested in is, do you support raising the taxes? Not to put it on the ballot, do you support the tax measure?
I will personally vote for it, but I also support folks making the decision that's in their best interest.
Great, thanks for that clarification. Ms. Fatni Hall, same question about the sales tax.
Thank you so much for the question. Yes, I publicly support the transportation sales tax with the hope that it will enable our county to engage in transformational expansions and that meet the needs of our growing society. Over the years, I've heard hardworking people talk about the need for expanding transportation services within the county so that they can get to work and make a living to support their families. And I think that's extremely important. When I'm passing the bus station and I've traveled the bus myself, it's hours that they're waiting there for the bus to go to work and to come from work. And I don't think that's absolutely fair. So one of the things that does concern me is who, with the county being such a transient county, I want to know who's going to be making sure that this gets executed? And that's extremely important because I'm interested in links connecting to Sun Rail and just making sure that we have an efficient system in place moving forward. So I am in full support of the sales tax.
Thank you very much.
Actually, I just wanted to ask you both real quick, a little less of a policy question and a little more of a personal question. And it'll obviously be a little bit different for the two of you. What was it that inspired you to get into politics and to get into this race in particular? And obviously, Commissioner Moore, you're, as the incumbent, you're looking back a couple more years, but I'll start with Ms. Fatni Hall in terms of running currently for this office.
Thank you for the question, Jay. You know, it's been several years that I've been asked to get involved. I'm a community leader, a community activist, advocate for the community. I've held several roles in this community. I'm the immediate past president of the Pine Hills Community Council. I've been the president of the Caribbean American Chamber of Commerce and the president of the United Foundation of Central Florida, all simultaneously. And during the entire 10, 11 years that I've been asked to run for this seat, it's been because of my leadership. You know, a leader is someone who knows the way, goes the way and shows the way. And I've been extremely successful in every single thing that I've done to help move this community forward. And I'll tell you, it's been a great number of individuals that have met with me, sat down with me to help this community bring about the things that they don't see and how they truly feel about what we need to do to move District 2 forward. So I am a leader that is very successful with solutions and brings about, listens to the community each and every single time and what they have to say. And it's important that we have someone that serves the entire District 2. So that's Apopka, Zellwood, Tangerine, Ocoee, Lockhart, Eatonville, College Park and Pine Hills, the entire district. So it's been an overwhelming ask and I answered that assignment.
If I can interrupt just very briefly, is there one specific issue or one specific moment that prompted your entry into this? Just very briefly.
One specific moment? Um, no, it's been several. It's been several moments. It's too many to even tap into, to be very honest with you, that has brought about this interest in, for several years that I've been asked. No, it's several.
Okay.
Bringing the community together, bringing the community together, not dividing it, is one of the main ones.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Moore, how about you? What was it that first prompted your interest in leadership and your interest in commissioners in particular?
Well, I've been around county commissioners for a long time, following, you know, the work that they do. It's so vast and so broad. And I first ran, of course, for the Orange County School Board in 2008 and it was a tough job. I was dealing with all the preemptions from the state, trying to get schools built. At one point, we had to pass a referendum to fund the capital side to the operating side. And I was there when we earned the top urban school district in the entire country. The downside probably was when we had to sue the Orange County Commission to get, which is now Windermere High School, built. And going through that land use process firsthand, that's probably when I first really thought about running for it myself. And I always had this question, you know, does the community, the elementary school create the community or do the neighborhoods create the success of a community? And I've come to believe that it's both. You have to have strong schools and strong neighborhoods. And so at that point, when we got in that lawsuit, I really got interested in running for the county commission. I've been able to see 18 schools built throughout this entire seat and have equity and fairness and the educational offerings. And so I've really put a premium on my efforts on working with neighborhood leaders, helping them to get the full infrastructure that they deserve, developing leadership teams. And so it was really this love of community, knowing that the school and the neighborhoods would make the difference.
Okay, and you bring up, you brought up the topic of development. And most people have come to agree that with the growing population, Orange County is approaching 1.4 million people, that the best way to grow is by focusing on dense urban development rather than sprawl. That requires the county who controls most of the land where sprawl would occur to engage in severely disciplined decision-making. What further measures would you support to help unincorporated Orange County resist sprawl? And we'll start with Commissioner Moore.
Thank you. That's an excellent question and it's probably one of the main jobs and duties that we do here. And so the county is right now engaged in Vision 2050, which is a 30-year plan. And literally, staff is looking at all these land uses to try to figure out where we can add people. In fact, 700,000 by 2050, which is just a shocking number. And so we've already started, I can see, Chris, yeah, I mean, it's difficult for all of us. None of us really want that. And but they come, we can't put a wall at the border. And so we've already changed some policies to make it easier for ADU's accessory dwelling units. To see more info, I'm seeing that particularly in the South of Apopka, Lockhart area already, when we've cleaned up neighborhoods, we're getting folks maybe put an extra building on for children or mother-in-law or aging parent. We're seeing more interest and we need to do much more with these duplexes and triplexes. Very excited to encourage one of our local entrepreneurs and business owners who has bought land in South of Apopka to build townhomes that are more affordable. And so certainly our strategic plan, our comprehensive plan of work on that issue, we've also got to protect with the sprawl side. We cannot be building in the middle of our rural settlements. I've turned down multiple, multiple projects to protect and preserve that. I've been instrumentally involved in the water quality in the spring. I stood in front of 500 screaming residents and talked them into sewer situations, systems, excuse me, so that we could protect our environment and they're all for it. And it's given me a platform to talk about bear garbage cans and other sustainable practices. And so I believe with the planning, we can protect our suburban areas, make the growth go in these high-density transit corridors, certainly with that penny tax and the Sun Rail additional bus routes. We're going to encourage higher, denser development in those areas, protect the rural settlements and allow our folks who love suburbia to keep suburbia, but potentially have more room to put mom, grandma, her children there with them.
Ms. Fatni Hall?
Hi, thanks for the question. You know, when applications are submitted for developmental review, there are key features that ensure the optimal needs for the improvement of the quality of life for our residents. And it's considered with the residents' voices at the table. It's extremely important that we are listening to the residents' voices at the table. And I think one of the things that's been mentioned is absolutely building up, right? We can definitely get more use of space. This means a delicate balance of decisions like having density where density makes sense and conservation of our rural areas is also protected. Then we must go above and beyond to protect conservation areas, pulling as many funds from the federal, state level to acquire conservation lands that are sensitive, habitats to ensure the ecosystems that matter most for preserving the creatures found specifically in Florida and that they can remain.
Thank you very much.
I'll try to follow up actually. The, there were two extraordinarily strong votes in 2020 to protect Split Oak Forest and to create one of the county's first so-called rights of nature amendments in Orange County. 80-plus percent of voters supported either measure. However, the county commission did not revisit its vote on the proposed expressway through Split Oak and has not taken any legal action to defend, you know, following the legislature's move to preempt, to defend the voter's will and the rights of nature. And a lot of people believe that their trust has been betrayed. I would very much like for both of you to address what, if anything, you think the commission should do to regain that trust and particularly if there's anything they should be doing in response to those amendments, because the commission really has done nothing to date. So we'll start with Ms. Fatni Hall.
I think it's important now, when you have such a vote as 86% that voted on something that they did not want. And the way the commission voted clearly is not in favor of what the results showed with the 86%. I think it's time that we took a look at where we are with our county commissioners and the vote, because we have to listen to the voice of the people. I'll tell you, people are very upset at the results and the way the board of county commissioners voted and that their voice means nothing to them. So I think it's time that we revisit that Split Oak situation because it will not go away. It will not. It will not go away. I think it's important for us to make sure that the residents are definitely being heard.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes, of course, we have to keep in mind that that vote was after the fact. I had already, we had already voted on the Split Oak Forest issue. And I would say to you that this is also an issue with Osceola County and the trusts, and they have been in favor of it. I do not sit on the CFX Board. In fact, that's Mayor Demings and Commissioner Siplin, who were also in favor of it. And so at this point, you are seeing the board take extremely active measures about the environment. I mentioned it already before, and we have received over $40 million of money from the state. And let me tell you, that was a very difficult process, listening to the people to bring money back and to get them in favor of it. And so we're working with four neighborhoods right now where we have seen the completion of a study to tell us where we can go next. There'll be ongoing work to get this funded from the state. My work with the septic to sewer has led to revisiting all of our codes with regard to when we put septic in. So when we talk about Split Oak Forest, this board has been extremely proactive in trying to protect the environment. We're putting money into passive lands and those sorts of things. And so I would say to you, I don't hear a lot up in my area specifically about Split Oak because it's way down in Osceola County. And I do support the fact that now Orange County has 940-some acres additional that we will put passive. The CFX Board has agreed to put animal tunnels and passageways under the road like we did with the Waccaiva. I sit on that Waccaiva Board. I support that issue that was brought up by Commissioner Constantine. And so I don't think you can just look at one particular vote and then say that this board or even my leadership, that we've not been pro-environment.
Thank you. And Scott, did you have one more?
Sure. Yeah, I wanted to ask about hotel taxes. Other communities, both in Florida and around the country, have used hotel taxes on basic community needs like buses, public safety, affordable housing and schools. Orange County has traditionally resisted asking legislators to allow that here, instead spending the money on the convention center and Visit Orlando primarily. My question for you is, do you believe state laws in Florida should be changed to allow hotel taxes to be spent more on local needs? And if so, which one? And Ms. Moore, we'll start with you.
Well, this board certainly didn't extend the CRA or the TDT dollars long-term to try and get a little more help on community needs. But I think you have to remember, this is legislative decision. It was back in the day. It still is today. The preemptions and the composition of this legislature, I don't think would support that. And so we do what we can with what we can. And I certainly have supported the arts. And it looks like my appointee will be chairing the TDT and she is a great advocate for funding arts out of those TDT dollars. We've seen Visit Orlando promote our natural beautiful assets with the springs and arts and culture so that those dollars that are going into advertising, and let's not forget, you know, some of this is important that we promote our industry and jobs and the economic vitality of our areas. So I don't think we have the ability to get the legislature to change that. So we have to have a little broader approach. I really support the idea of Universal and Disney in partnership with the private sector and some public dollars, building more affordable workforce housing for their employees. And I absolutely support some transportation improvements because when you have 75,000 employees going down to iDrive, we want them to be able to get there as quickly, efficiently and low cost as possible. So I think this board is doing a good job with the cards that we were dealt to try to make this situation better for everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Fatni Hall, as I mentioned, other counties in Florida have successfully persuaded the legislature to expand uses in their counties. I'm wondering if that's something that you support.
That's a great question because, you know, I am a very big proponent of what has worked elsewhere, right? And I've done my homework and research in different areas, but we also have to know, just as you heard legislatively, what we're able to do. So some things are out of a county commission's hands, right? And we can work with the private sector in helping to see what we can do because it's worked through work I've done in the community with private, with private, with the private sector and it's been extremely successful, but not sure whether or not legislatively this is something that we can focus on. But I'm definitely willing to be a champion to hear how we can make it work here if it's worked elsewhere, you know? So I'm very open to hearing what it is that we can do.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, we have come to the end of our time. I really so much appreciate you taking the time to sit down and talk with us. And what I'll do now is invite both of you to make a closing statement. I'll start with the challenger, Sandra Fatni Hall. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate. Thank you for allowing me this morning, the opportunity to speak to you, each and every one of you. I am a community leader and activist. I am an advocate for the community, have over 13 years experience here in this community that I've put to good use, all 13 years that I've been here. This is, you heard me say, a leader is someone who knows the way, goes the way and shows the way. I run a nonprofit organization that's been extremely successful with sending over 200 young people to college. Over $250,000 in scholarships have been awarded to these young people. The graduation rate at Evans High School has gone from 48 to 97.6% under my leadership. We have fed this community close to 3 million plus meals. We have helped with a solution center that, with our young people, with their families, their homes, to become more successful through using a holistic approach. That success rate throughout the district has helped to propel the district from 2016 to 2020, 21, the crime rate has gone down in one particular area, over 33%. So being a leader that champions causes that listen to our community, to help move our community forward, why not vote Sandra Fatni Hall to allow this to continue throughout the entire district? Not just one part of the district, not just two parts of the district, the entire district. And guess what? I have integrity. I have leadership. I am absolutely someone that can move this community forward. I believe in the three P's, people, passion and purpose. And I absolutely ask for everyone to be supportive. I look forward to everyone's support and helping to bring about the difference that's needed. And I truly hope that you all look up Sandra Fatni Hall, the work that's been done, the success that has taken place throughout the areas that I've been a part of. And I look forward to your support. Sandra Fatni Hall, Orange County District 2 Commissioner, and I am qualified.
All right, Commissioner Moore?
Yes, thank you so much for this platform today. We didn't have it four years ago and I really appreciate the effort of the Sentinel to allow our citizens to hear a little bit more about the candidates. I'm Christine Moore and I have two grown children and three beautiful grandchildren who had to stand in for me the other night when I was at a 12-hour board meeting. I also had the opportunity and blessing to serve on the Orange County School Board for 10 years where we earned top urban school district. And in fact, my first vote was to vote to have Evans High School stay right where it was and not move to Ocoee. I've been very involved with building 18 schools over 10 years. I have supported Mayor Demings on his initiatives for affordable housing. Been incredibly blessed to be at several dedications in the Pine Hills area. I approved, voted for and made the motion for another affordable housing up in the north of Apopka area on Plymouth-Sorrento Road. We have worked very hard through Metro Plan on safety for our citizens with corridor studies, with speed studies and redesign. I've been bringing quite a bit of money back to the district. Metro Plan will be funding improvements to the Rock Springs Welch area where we've seen a significant number of fatalities extending trails. I also was able to bring back from the state over $40 million for septic to sewer conversions. In terms of my district, I've worked very hard with neighborhood leaders. We've done strategic planning. We've been working on principles to strengthen their neighborhoods, improve their infrastructure. improve their infrastructure, receive grant money, have them work together because our county is only as strong as our weakest neighborhoods. I would love the opportunity to serve you another four years and keep all of these projects moving forward. I'm Christine Moore, and I'd appreciate your vote on August twenty third.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, as you said, this um this race will be on the August twenty third ballot for residents of District Two and Orange County. Um, if no, no one candidate gets fifty percent of the vote, it will go forward to the November election, I believe. And um, and so we we very much appreciate you taking the time to meet with us and wish you both the best of luck.